Going to call the November 4th, 2024 Wichita Board of Education meeting in order. We appreciate you joining us tonight in law, in person and online. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. The roll call, we all here except for one excused absence from Hazel. So there will be six voting members tonight. Would you please join with me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Tonight's flag pledge of allegiance will be led by the East High JROTC, led by Cliff Bain, Lieutenant Colonel, United States Air Force, retired. And tonight's color guard is Cadet Captain Louis Waregu, Cadet Master Sergeant Nat Doe, Cadet Captain Gabby Lopez, Cadet Airman Basic Angela Palacio. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Join with me in a round of applause for the East High JROTC. And I hope it gives you as much of us, I hope it gives you as much of a thrill as it does to me on the night before a national election, to join together as a community for our pledge of allegiance. It means a lot to all of us and sends a chill through my spine as we do that. Latoya, first item, please.
Good new, good news, Kansas Can Star recognition program award.
As Tim and Shannon come down, tonight, we're going to recognize the Kansans Can Star recognition. The Wichita Public Schools has achieved recognition in the 2024 Kansas Can Star recognition program, demonstrating our commitment to the state's vision for education. Kansas leads the world in the success of each student. This year, we have earned a Bronze Stars for Kindergarten Readiness and a Copper Star for our Individual Plan of Study IPS Initiative. The Bronze Star reflects our high-quality early childhood education program, which emphasizes family engagement, a safe learning environment, a developmentally appropriate curriculum, and qualified staff. The Copper Star recognizes our ongoing stu- effort to ensure that all eighth graders have a five-year plan in place by May of 2025, supporting their academic readiness program. So tonight, we have with us Shannon Benoit, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Tim Hamlin, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. So, Tim, Shannon, it's nice to recognize you and feel free to describe further what this award's about.
Shannon, would you like to go first? Go ahead, please.
Welcome, Shannon.
Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Beilefeld, and board members. Thank you for recognizing us tonight. As you can imagine, this process took us quite a while to achieve, as there were several different rubrics that we had to work through. High-quality early childhood was one of the biggest pieces that we talked about and in our application, talking about how our pre-kindergarten, our kindergarten teachers, the instruction that they do in the classroom, and the fidelity to the program that they have. We have amazing teachers in this district in early childhood, which I know you guys are very aware of. I also want to express just my gratitude for my team. They're amazing. This team's amazing. They support all of our teachers and our paraprofessionals throughout pre-kindergarten and some in kindergarten. They also help to maintain the high-quality standards and effective curriculum, also with child assessments and just all the work that they do with behaviors and IEP support and just all the love that they show our kids throughout the district. So I do want to recognize them because they are integral part of this and they did help with the eight-day process that it took to complete this application. So my team is Jenny Flood. She is our echo team teacher that serves on our echo team, which is our early childhood outcome team, which does all of our assessments for students that come into our district.
Jenny, if you want to move into the light so we can recognize you.
And then next is Erica Hartzler. Erica is one of our early childhood teaching specialists. And then Allison Harris is another early childhood teaching specialist. And Stephanie Gertz is our third early childhood teaching specialist. So this is a fabulous team, so just want to say thank you for all the hard work, too.
Thank you.
I, too, would like to thank you for taking the opportunity to recognize this achievement. One thing that I would like to add is that this is the fifth year in a row since the program began in 2020 that Wichita Public Schools has been awarded this, this recognition. So, and then joining me this evening is a young lady who I feel is, is really responsible. This is Laura Barker. She is our IPS and work-based learning specialist for Wichita Public Schools. And without her leadership, this could have probably not happened or would not have happened. So definitely want to take the opportunity to recognize Laura for all of her efforts. I do feel that this has positioned us very strongly to achieve that interim goal that all eighth graders will have a five-year plan by the end of this school year. So thank you again for letting us have this opportunity.
We appreciate that. Tim, Laura, did you want to say anything?
I've got it. Thank you.
Woman of few words.
Alicia, we do have an award that we want to present on behalf of gratitude from the Kansas Can and also the Wichita Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Shannon, on behalf of your team.
Thank you very much, Tim and Shannon. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to put the superintendent on the spot here real quick. We also had a late-breaking good news item with Fabian. If you want to stand up, he received a leadership award from the Kansas, from, excuse me, Wichita Hispanic Chamber of Commerce for his leadership both inside and outside the school district. And we just wanted to say thank you, Fabian, for all you said. And if Kelly wants to. We appreciate you.
Yeah, I don't need to say anything. I didn't know Stan was going to do that. I didn't tell him about it, so. Very, very well deserved. So Fabian's a great leader and a great part of our team.
Thank you. Latoya, next item, please. Welcome, Katie.
Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, and Superintendent Beilefeld and distinguished board members. I just wanted to say thank you for reminding everyone tomorrow is an important election. And if you're not sure in your polling place, you can look on, I think it's the Sedgwick County website, and pull it up there, just put in your address, and you need to bring your ID when you vote. So, so important that we participate in our civic duty. I was going to talk a little bit tonight about the DOJ settlement and making sure our teachers are supported through these big changes. I think probably the first thing that I want to talk about is I think it's really necessary that we, when it comes to this Department of Justice agreement, that we remember that the code of conduct was developed to ensure that our district is addressing behavior issues consistently and equitably. And, and I think that's really, really key. I remember Superintendent Beilefeld saying back in, I think it was May, I know he had just started when this was coming about, and he had said how this is going to make sure that, like, we're going to be better from this. And so I, I do think that's very, very important. We keep that in mind. We've just been hearing a lot of misunderstandings from classroom teachers, and I do want to say thank you to the department that's working with the agreement. It's Vince Evans, Melissa Zimmerman, Todd Sanchez, DeeDee Stru, and Marisol. They've been wonderful with answering questions for teachers, taking feedback for the draft code of conduct that will go into effect in January. So that's been, it's just been nice to be able to sit down and talk about, these are concerns from our educators, and that feedback's been taken. So that's been really, really wonderful. We really appreciate that. But I want to make sure that as this is being rolled out to the buildings, I know it's a draft right now, but there's been some confusion. And some of our teachers are feeling like, at times, people are, like administrators, are saying, we can't do anything because of this DOJ settlement. And so I think it's important that we discuss why this is in place and why it's so important that we have that consistency and how this is going to make us better. I think our teachers, I know our teachers want to have a safe learning environment for our students, and they also want to be supported. We have students sometimes that come to school with a lot of needs, and it's really hard to meet those needs. And so I guess tonight, we're just asking that we re-message this whole thing and make sure that we're saying that this is going to probably be a challenging transition, but we're going to remain supportive of our staff and approach these changes constructively. And we're going to work together to make sure that our classrooms are safe, that our students are supported, and that our educators feel supported. A couple weeks ago, or maybe it was a month ago, somebody reached out to me about, from a news station, about the teacher shortage in Kansas. And we want to, we really want to ensure that we keep our best teachers and that they feel supported through these hard changes. So I guess that's what I'm asking for tonight, is that we work together and just kind of re-message this. I know right now, people are like, oh, we don't want to do this. We're not going to be able to support you with this and this and this. And I just, I think you're going to have all the support you need through this hard, challenging time of changes would be a better way to bring that to staff. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Latona, next item, please.
Service Employees International.
I do not see ESOW today as another representative of the Service Employees Union. If not, we'll go on to public communication. Just remind the speaker that our policy is to stay within three minutes and stay on your topic, and we cannot discuss personnel matters or student information in your comments. Our first speaker is Courtney Vannick. Welcome again, Courtney.
Hello again. My name is Courtney Vannick, and I spoke at the last board meeting about the harmful impacts of potentially removing and relocating a group of children with disabilities from Isley. Today, we face an even more devastating reality. These children might not only be removed and relocated, but also separated across different buildings. I imagine many of you in this room are parents. I want you to picture your child being told they can no longer stay at their school because there isn't enough space. Think about, think about how it would feel to know that they will be removed, relocated, and scattered from their community, only to learn that the same school in which the district claims there is no space will enroll new out-of-boundary students the following year. The Department of Education's Special Education Process Handbook defines placement as an educational environment rather than a specific building location, which is how this decision may be argued legally. However, I would argue that the educational environment also encompasses the relationships these children's have, these children have spent years developing. The same handbook highlights the need to consider potential harmful effects. I attended the October 16th onsite meeting at Isley, and it's clear that a lot of planning went into this proposal, particularly regarding non-exceptional students. The district addressed challenges students face when transitioning and the sense of belonging they experience at Isley. Additionally, thoughtful consideration was given to the students who would now fall outside the new boundary, allowing them to remain at Isley to mitigate these harmful effects of relocating. There was no mention or consideration of the social-emotional needs of the students in the mixed abilities program. There is not one positive social-emotional benefit to removing, relocating, and separating these children. I'm not here asking for special treatment for my son. I'm here asking for equal treatment. The Special Education Process Handbook also states that placement decisions should not be based solely on factors like severity of disability, availability of space, or administrative convenience. Yet each time concerns have been raised with the district, the response has been the same: hard decisions and space constraints. This isn't a hard decision. It's a harmful one and possibly a convenient one. A decision aligned with the Special Education Handbook would be to ensure that all current Isley students can stay together. The district may meet every requirement on our children's IEPs in the name of least restrictive environment, but for these children, the true least restrictive environment is the safe, supportive home they have at Isley. Again, I am not here asking for privilege. I am advocating for equality so that the children in the mixed abilities program at Isley are not left behind in this process.
Thank you, Courtney. Our next speaker is Jana Price. And you don't have to be concerned about time. We'll start when you speak, when you start. Welcome, Jana.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jana Price. I'm here tonight with my husband Rodney and son Matthew. Matthew is 11 years old and is a fifth grader at Isley Elementary in the mixed abilities program. I'm here to speak for my son because he's non-verbal, but I'm also here to speak as a very concerned mother. Matthew started his education in USD 259 at Little Early Childhood Development Center before he moved to Isley. When he started at Little, he started riding the bus. To say that he loves riding the bus is an understatement. I share this story with you because it's an example of how people with Down Syndrome see the good in everything. Matthew's outlook on life rubs off on other people. This isn't intentional. It is a blessing, a blessing that the USD 259 District Administration doesn't see every day, a blessing that they don't live and experience every day, a blessing that will be taken away from Isley next year by moving the mixed abilities program to other schools. Lauren Hatfield said at the site meeting here held at Isley October 16th that studies have shown that the transition from fifth to sixth grade is more difficult for students than even going from middle school to high school. Why then is it a good idea to move our son at the most important school transition he will have? Why can't he stay at Isley where he's been for seven years? Why should he be treated different? Why? Because he has a disability. One of the worst parts is that we won't know where he's moving until April of 2025. That is completely unacceptable. This isn't adequate time for us to tour the school, meet the staff, possibly shadow and see if it's a good fit for him. All children thrive on routine. I would argue that our son needs that routine more than a general ed student. He knows Isley, and Isley knows him. Isley is the gold standard of inclusion. If this plan moves through as presented, think about the families that have students both in general ed and the mixed abilities classroom currently at Isley. This decision is essentially telling, telling the general ed students that their sibling can't go to school anymore with them because of their disability. That is a definition of discrimination and sets a very bad precedent. That could impact both students for the rest of their life. I've heard that District Administration wants USD to be the premier district in the area. That may be true for general education students, but it's not true for students with disabilities. They are failing my son and all students with disabilities with this decision. Due to that failure, we are being forced to look outside of USD 259. District Administration is willing to make decisions that are good for general ed students at the expense of students with disabilities.
Thank you, Jana. Our next speaker is Rodney Price.
Good evening, President Reeser and all of the board. Thank you for allowing me the time here to discuss a very important topic to me, my family, and other families at Isley Traditional Magnet that have a child with a developmental and/or intellectual disability. My son Matthew attends Isley and is part of the mixed abilities program. He started, as my wife said, he's started preschool at Little Early and quickly went over the hearts of his teachers and staff there. When it was time to transition to his next opportunity, we were originally assigned to another unnamed school. Not that we didn't like that school, but we had heard so many great things about Isley. And they had told us what a great school it was, and we wanted to follow a similar path. And my wife advocated, no, she fought to have Matthew at Isley, and since then, just like at Little, he has thrived. When we learned about the proposal to extend, expand rather, Isley to the eighth-grade level, we were elated and hopeful about his future. Those hopes were dashed, though, pretty quickly when we learned that the proposal to end the mixed abilities program. I really believe Sandy Smith and her entire team at Isley deserve better. As my wife said, they have built a gold standard for educating our special needs children in a time where the Wichita Public Schools' goal is to have every student future-ready. This is a major step backward. Not only does Matthew benefit by attending Isley, but the general education students do as well. And on a regular basis, we receive pictures of Matthew interacting with his peers, whether someone's reading to him in the library or playing out on the playground, and it makes me elated to see that. Inclusion definitely benefits everyone. This proposal is, rather, this proposal, rather, is playing musical chairs with children with mixed abilities and their families, who don't want to be left without a chair when the music stops. So let's do the right thing. Let's expand Isley to eighth grade, but let's preserve the mixed abilities program. When all students are included, only then will they truly be future-ready. Appreciate your time. Thank you, board.
We appreciate you, Rodney.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Edelston. Welcome, David.
Thank you. I'm also commenting about the Isley transitional plan. I'm a Bel Air resident. All my three children have attended Isley. My son William is currently in the second grade, receives special needs services. If you're making notes on these comments, what I would like you to take away from mine is we still have two years where the facilities constraints don't have to dictate the movement of the special needs program. The children, the staff, and the program itself would benefit greatly from having the time to consider and enact a better transition. Isley has and fully deserves its reputation for an excellent special needs program. The current plan is to dissolve it and move the services elsewhere. Isley spent years developing a core of excellent teachers and service providers who work incredibly well together within the school as a whole. Isley has made genuine efforts to build community and inclusion for children with special needs. These things don't happen overnight. They take real intention and dedication by staff members and parents. Moving the services to another location, the district will lose an excellent program. There's no guarantee that we'll retain its current fantastic staff, and over the same period of time, I doubt it will restore the same program that we have today at Isley. I attended the listening session at the school a couple of weeks ago, and one of the slides listed all the positive aspects of having a K through eight school for students, including for many, better sense of belonging through longer-term relationships with students and teachers, familiarity with the facility, all resulting in a better educational outcome. I don't disagree. But unfortunately, the children with special needs won't be able to take advantage of this. Instead, not only will they lose this opportunity, they'll have to make an additional transition. As children with special needs get older, they only find it harder to make meaningful relationships with their peers as the gap between speech and physical ability widens. William is friends, William has friends he's made since pre-K. They've learned to understand his speech and behaviors. They involve him in their friendship groups and share aspects of their lives with him. Because Will is in his local community, we see friends at the park or in the streets, and he's known by other parents who see him in the school. William knows his way around the school. He knows and understands the rules, even though he might not always obey them. William knows the staff, and the staff know him. They know how to communicate with him, and they understand his needs and how to meet them. William has a sense of belonging and value at Isley. The choice to move any student is difficult, but the current plan chooses to inflict this upon children who are the most vulnerable to it. Children with special needs need more than most: consistency, routine, and familiarity. I think we have an option, really, to spend the next two years really coming up with a far better plan. Highly disappointed with how the district has conducted this one. The school do, should, should have better. Students deserve better. A lot of parents have plenty of solutions they're willing to discuss. I've been credibly frustrated with lack of real communication from part of the district.
Thank you, David. Our final speaker tonight is Kevin Yale. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you. Mr. Vuk, I appreciate our conversation earlier. Do look forward to continuing that. Same with you, Ms. Bond, as well. Hopefully, you're already aware of what was being presented to the high school students during Drug Awareness Week. In case, I've printed out a few slides of some of the information that was presented on the, in this PowerPoint presentation. Specifically, Slide 1 and Slide 3 are mainly concerning to me. Teaching kids how to check illegal drugs is not a good, not a good plan, especially since some of these drugs are so powerful, it takes very minimal amount to induce overdose and/or mental issues. Same with teaching them to teach minimal amounts or take, to take minimal amounts of hallucinogens. What point, or why is it that the, the job of USD 259 educators to instruct students on how to take illegal drugs? It's just completely inappropriate. Educating students to participate in illegal, illegal activity is just not a good plan. Regardless if it's for their safety or not, regardless of your promotion of it or not, this still shows a level of acceptance of illegal drug use in the USD 259 system. This is unacceptable. I mean, what comes next? Do we start offering safe rooms for them to use drugs? Do we start having medical personnel and providing syringes? Do we hire a, somebody like Heisenberg from Breaking Bad and turn the chemistry labs into meth labs so that we can teach these students how to do this safely should they choose to participate? These what ifs, if these what ifs sound ridiculous, I agree, because they are a long step over from acceptance to actually participating in illegal activity. But if you'd asked me a few weeks ago, that district leadership would make this decision without parental consent and knowledge and informed decision. I would also call that ridiculous, and yet here we are. All I can say is my- All I can say is my greatest solace in this is this is my son's final year in USD two five nine. Had he not been, had he been younger, this, the actions taken about this action would have greatly influenced my decision as to whether or not to keep him in USD two five nine or move him to another school district. I'm sure this will be, become a similar question to other parents as more learn about this. I just happened to learn about it fairly quickly thanks to my son and him coming home and letting me know. I would go so far to say that there, that this, these types of decisions should not rest within, solely within the district. They need to be, have parental involvement. There needs to be a committee that has parents of students involved in it, probably educators and the school districts themselves that can help guide these decisions.
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate that. Thank you. Latona, next item, please.
Strategic Plan Goal One: Graduation Rate Progress Monitoring Report.
I'll now let Kelly introduce the topic.
Well, I will invite down Dr. Hatfield. We have, we're here to talk about our strategic plan. And last December and two thousand and twenty-three, you all approved the plan and our main three goals for student outcomes, which is graduation rate, being ready for life, college and career, and a sense of safety and belonging for students. I want to walk us back through the spring though, a little bit, because I think it's important to, to understand the full picture of why we are where we are when it comes to graduation rate. So as we were going through the hard process of closing schools and hearing from parents about the challenge of, you know, longer walks to school and all the, all the things that come with closing schools, we had a speaker that came a couple times and said, well, you're not cutting staff. Look at these numbers. And he would wave around his numbers and he would say, you're not cutting, you're not cutting staff. You're, you're overstaffed compared to what you used to be. To which we would respond, we know, right? What we did was we took the feedback from our buildings and the building needs assessment, and we listened to teachers and staff and we listened to principals and said, what are the things that we need to keep in the district in order to achieve our goals? Graduation rate, life readiness, safety and belonging. And so we, we, you all, made a strategic decision to maintain some of the programs that we had funded through ESER. Things like mental health supports, counselors, social workers, school psychologists, things like the future-ready advocates who are working with our students most at risk of dropping out or not graduating because they're behind on credits. And then in addition to that, we had invested in other things. Some night school opportunities, some alternative schooling things. And I hope tonight you can see that we can achieve our goals. If we are strategic and put our resources where they most impact kids, we can achieve our goals. And we've done something pretty remarkable with graduation rate in closing gaps and supporting every student. You hear me talk about it all the time. I think these numbers from graduation rate really show a desire for every student to be successful. And the data's there. The data is in, is in the, in the numbers, or sorry, the data's in the numbers. The proof is in the pudding. The, the, the data shows that we, we can do things when we're, when we're strategic. It does take resources, right? We, we do have to invest in order to help kids, especially some of our kids that take extra when it comes to these things. But I think that you can see that there was a, there was a strategy involved. We made hard decisions. And because we were focused on our goals and our student outcomes have improved from the class of twenty-three to the class of twenty-four. So I can take very little credit for that. It's really Gil and Lauren and the secondary team and our principals and, and, and. It's a whole team that's done it. But I did want to set the stage when it comes to that. Lauren's going to share some of the, the information, and then obviously we'll have time for questions. Take it away, Dr. Hatfield.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Lauren Hatfield, the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools, and excited to bring you tonight a progress monitoring about goal number one, which is our graduation rate. I do want to put out there that these numbers are not finalized. We won't get a stamp, this is the final number from the state, maybe by winter break, if not a little bit after. But it's always within a tenth, maybe a couple tenths of a percent or so. We closed the dropout graduation summary report, which is the big report that's open all of October. We closed that at the end of October, and so we, this is the numbers that we had from there, and they're always really, really, really close. So we felt comfortable about bringing these numbers, even though we don't have the official stamp. This is the final, this is the final number, so. You should have a few documents in front of you. As I'm looking at most of you, I do believe you have it. One looks like this, yes, with lots of information on it, and then another one is like this, and they are in the order. You will need them in addition to your, to your handout with the slides on there if you're curious. So a little bit about what the goal is and remind you what the goal is, because you might not have the numbers in front of you every single day like the rest of us do. So goal number one is to increase our graduation rate from seventy-nine point two percent to eighty-five percent by two thousand and twenty-nine. You will see that there are a few years underneath there, and there's a reason that those years were selected. So two thousand and ten is on there because two thousand and ten is the first year that the graduation rate calculation is what it is right now, right? So the class of two thousand and twenty-nine and before, you're not comparing the same mathematical calculation. So we're not comparing apples and apples pre-two thousand and ten. So that's why two thousand and ten is on there, so you can see where our starting point was. In two thousand and ten, our district graduation rate was sixty-three point one percent. Then, two thousand and eighteen is on there. The reason two thousand and eighteen is the next number on there is because in two thousand and eighteen, and some of you are members of this board, that's when the Board of Education adopted the strategic plan under Dr. Thompson that had a graduation rate goal in the strategic plan. Because prior to that, there wasn't a graduation rate goal in the strategic plan. So two thousand and eighteen is on there is because that was our baseline, the first time graduation rate entered into the strategic plan. The class of two thousand and eighteen's graduation rate was seventy-four point zero percent. The next number you see there is two thousand and twenty. The reason two thousand and twenty is there is because that was a blip in the radar because of some choices that had to be made in two thousand and twenty. We all know, schools shut down in the spring of two thousand and twenty. So that class of two thousand and twenty, they never came back after spring break, if you'll remember this, right? So we froze everybody's grades and said, okay, your grades can't go down. They can only go up. So the classes that you need, if you don't have passing grades in them, work on those that you pass, right? So just the, the nature of that choice caused a pretty nice rise in graduation rate that year because the system was different in two thousand and twenty. So in two thousand and twenty, our graduation rate was eighty point five percent with an asterisk perhaps, and that is the highest it's been in the calculation. Eighty point five percent is the highest it's been in a year. And then two thousand and twenty-three is on there is because that's our baseline now with our new strategic plan. The class of two thousand and twenty-three was seventy-nine point two percent. So that's why those four years are on there. It might seem haphazard because you're like, these aren't evenly spaced and all the different things. But each of those four years was chosen for a reason. Actually added this because Mr. Reeser said, hey, can you remember to talk about that how dynamic the calculation for graduation rate is? The calculation in and of itself is super simple, straight average, but it's very dynamic. So let's do a little math lesson. Numerator, top of the fraction, denominator, bottom of the fraction, okay? That bottom of the fraction number is what makes this calculation so dynamic, right? It's simple. Graduates divided by how big your cohort is times a hundred. That's about as simple as a calculation as you can get. But what your cohort size is is super dynamic. It's determined when kids enter seventh grade. Your cohort year is determined when kids enter seventh grade. So any kid that has entered our system that another system doesn't end up being responsible for is in that denominator. I'll talk more about that in a minute, about what do you mean that we end up being responsible for, okay? I'm going to have an example calculation on the screen. The reason the example calculation is there, I picked thirty-five hundred because we have approximately thirty-five hundred kids in every cohort year. It, it ebbs and flows a little bit, but that's about what it is every year by the time we're said and done. And then I just made it so it equaled seventy-nine point two percent because that's what our graduation was. Those are not real numbers from last year. This is me just creating an example calculation so that you can see. Again, the calculation is simple, but it's very dynamic. So there's a couple ways you can approach raising graduation rate. First, very simply, add graduates, right? The numerator gets bigger, your graduation rate goes up. It's very simple. So my second calculation, example calculation, again, these are not real. This is me just fake numbers, okay? So the second calculation, let's pretend we added a hundred graduates. So we added a hundred kids to the numerator. Now, what was seventy-nine point two percent is now eighty-two point one percent because we added a hundred kids that graduated. Hundred more kids got a diploma, the number changes. The other way to attack the graduation rate calculation is to change the denominator. And here's what I mean. For example, Timmy's, Timmy comes here in ninth grade. Timmy enrolls at North High. Timmy moves to Texas. Means Timmy should come out of that denominator because he's not our responsibility anymore because Timmy moved to Texas. He's no longer Wichita Public Schools' responsibility. We don't have to track down whether or not Timmy got a diploma in Texas. He should drop off of the denominator. So when Timmy moves, our denominator should go from three thousand five hundred to three thousand four hundred ninety-nine. You see what I'm saying? Okay? But if we don't do a good job with record-keeping or as good a job as we could, we keep kids in the denominator that shouldn't be there anymore, right? So the Timmy situation, he says, hey, I'm actually going to move to Topeka. Okay, so we exit him with an exit code that says he goes to Topeka. Then, two weeks later, we get a records request from Texas. If Timmy goes to Topeka but doesn't enroll in Topeka, he's still our responsibility and he stays in our denominator. But we got a records request from Texas. If we don't go fix the exit, he stays in our denominator and counts against us, even though he moved to Texas because our data didn't keep up and wasn't clean enough. So when I say adjust the cohort, appropriately adjust the cohort to make sure you're scrubbing the data and cleaning the data so that the kids who are in the denominator should be in the denominator. Do you see what I'm saying there? So there's a few things. Moving out of state is one. If a kid goes to a homeschool that's not accredited or any other non-accredited private school, they stay in our denominator. They stay in our denominator. If a kid moves in-state but doesn't get picked up by somebody else in-state, they stay in our denominator. One of the things we have to do when we look at it is, oh, we thought Timmy moved to Topeka. And then we go look. Timmy did move to Topeka. They accident, they didn't realize he came from us. They enrolled him with a new state ID, so the state system isn't tracking that this Timmy and this Timmy are the same kid. And so we have to go say, uh-uh, uh-uh, Timmy's over there. Take him out of our denominator. Does that make sense? That's another, that's another common one. Unfortunately, we do have students pass away. If we don't exit them correctly, they could be in our denominator if we don't, if we're not exiting them correctly. So that records-keeping related to who should and who shouldn't be in your cohort, cohort is what I mean when I'm talking about adjust the cohort size. We don't want to take anybody out that should be there, but let's make sure the kids that are there are supposed to be there. And then the best option is to do both. What if we add graduates and we clean up the cohort so that the kids are supposed to be there, right? It's in a hun, it's a hundred-kid adjustment every way. So in the, in the dark blue, add graduates. We added a hundred graduates. We went to eighty-two point one percent. In the teal, we subtracted a hundred kids from the cohort. We went to eighty-one point five percent. If you add graduates and you subtract from the cohort and you come from both directions, all of a sudden it's eighty-four point four. So again, super simple calculation, but how dynamic that cohort is makes a very substantial difference in where you end up, and you got to attack from both directions.
And I would just add, with the, with the cohorts, managing that cohort is a significant challenge because of our size, right? When I was in a smaller district, we knew every single kid. So we knew if Lauren left, we knew, okay, take Lauren out. We know where she went. And keep in mind, this class of twenty-four, what were they doing their freshman year when the cohort started?
They were at home.
They were at home. And so the record-keeping of that and that big drop we had in enrollment also created some of these bookkeeping issues. So we're going back to fall of two thousand and twenty and chasing these kids down from then until now. And not by we, I mean Lauren and her team. These guys did an amazing job of tracking that down. So we want to count every kid we should be counting, but we also want the best data we can to make sure that, that the record-keeping is accurate.
All right. So now, do you remember a couple of slides ago? I guess it was only one slide ago. What was last year's number? Seventy-nine point two, right? Remember, that's where we were. Seventy-nine point two is where we were in two thousand and twenty-three. All right. So in two thousand and twenty-four, we really got after it. And like I said, we approached this from both directions. How do we add graduates and how do we clean up our cohort data so that we have as many, as much accuracy as possible in that denominator? And we relentlessly pursued both of those pieces, and we got to eighty-four point three percent, which is a five point one percent increase from one year to the next. It is the largest jump we've ever taken in one year, and it is by far the highest graduation rate Wichita Public Schools has ever had. Just soak that in for a second. To underst, like Kelly said, with our size, to understand what this means. That's about a hundred and seventy-eight more kids that graduated in the class of twenty-four than we had the year before that. Every, again, rough math, because the denominator is always changing, every three and a half kids is a tenth of a percent. And we talked over and over and over again. We're fighting for tenths of a percent. We're fighting to change kids' lives. Find them, find a way for them to graduate. Find a way to fix the data so that it's correct, right? So that our number is really our number. Because for how long have we under-reported the number potentially? Because we haven't done maintenance on the cohort part. And we've been doing some maintenance, but when I tell you we turned over rocks, I don't think there's any rocks left to turn over in that class. I would like to give a shout, shout out to Sonya Baumann and Mary Ellen Gibson and Scott Dellinger, who didn't matter how many crazy emails I sent them, never told me I was nuts to my face and just kept digging and kept digging and kept digging and kept digging. And when I ran out of things for them to dig, they found more things to dig on. They are a huge, huge part of finding all of that. Because like Kelly said, it goes back four years, so, and these kids started high school remote. So there's a lot of things that happened in that remote year that there's not a human in that high school that necessarily knows because they didn't lay eyes on them until they were in second semester of high school. And it's a lot harder to know the kids when they're not in front of you every single day. So we pulled in, in August, we, I said, give me a list of every kid who was supposed to graduate last year who didn't. And we gave it to the schools, and man, did they go find them. Because you have until September thirtieth, this is why this data takes so long. You have until September thirtieth to graduate, and you're considered on time. So the class of two thousand and twenty-four, you're on time until September thirtieth of, of that year. So there are schools that went and found kids and said, you are so close. You only have a class left. Come, come to school and finish. We're not letting you slip through the cracks when you're this close. I'm just so, so impressed with all of the work that our system did to get there. If you're curious about some subgroup data, that's what this is. So thank you to Strategic Communications for putting this together. This should be familiar to you. You've seen it before. And so we're going to talk a little bit about some subgroup data, but this has more specifics and other years if you want to compare year to year on it. So let's talk about, let's see here. So let's talk about, let's see here. Let's do this one. There's not going to be one. You can change graduation rate, but I can't change this PowerPoint slide, so that tells you a little bit. All right. So let's dive into some specifics about subgroups. So this is our race and gender subgroups. There's only one subgroup, we don't have enough kids to count. Here's what I mean. The state says if you have 10 or more kids in the subgroup, it counts. There is one subgroup, Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. We don't have 10, we don't have 10 kids in it, so that subgroup doesn't count for us. They give us a number, but it's not reported in any of the stuff because we just don't have enough kids in that subgroup. So these are all of our race and gender subgroups that we have enough kids in. What do the asterisks mean? The asterisk means that subgroup has its highest ever graduation rate. So that's what that means. If you look across there, our race graduation gap is almost gone. Which is amazing. It's absolutely amazing. Now, our girls are still outpacing our boys, and it's not close, to be honest. But our boys and our girls both, in many, many, many subgroups, both had their highest ever, right? So the boys made a huge leap, but they didn't catch the girls because the girls made a huge leap too. And so now, the gap that we have to go after is the gender, is the gender gap. Now, this, not an excuse, but a reality, that gender gap persists across education across the United States. The girls are outpacing the boys in all the subgroups. So, that shows that data. Then, I wanted to just put a little pretend first-place trophy on here because there are four subgroups that had other subgroups than the ones you just saw that also had their highest rate ever. And it's astonishing to compare their rate from the class of 2024 to what their previous high graduation rate was. So I just wanted to call these four subgroups out specifically. So our students with free lunch had an 82% graduation rate. All of our students with free lunch, their previous high was 77.5. And that was in 2022. Our virtual students had 72.1% graduation rate. Their previous high was 70.4, which was last year. Our students with disabilities, I've heard a rumor that if it ever gets to 100%, somebody's getting a car. I heard that rumor. But there's a lot of folks in our Student Support Services Department who have done a lot of work. They actually went and found kids that had dropped out and said, can you come to AMAC and finish a couple of classes? And ran it. They had someone from their team that took time out of their day every day to check kids in and help them work on classes because they'd already said, I'm out, I'm not doing this anymore. And they went and found them and brought them back in, and it paid off. They were at 81.9. Their previous high was 76.6. And that was in 2022. And then our foster care graduation rate, their previous high was 53.6, and that was in 2018. And they're all the way at 75.9. So I just wanted to call special attention to those four because they weren't on the previous slide, and they made a lot of substantial growth, which is super important. So looking at individual schools, you can see your class of 23 and your class of 24 comparison as well as percent growth. Every single school went up, which is excellent. Every single school went up in their graduation rate. What do the asterisks mean? It's their highest graduation rate ever. There are a lot of asterisks on that page. East and EIA had their highest graduation rate ever last year, and then this year again. So they've had their highest graduation rate ever two years in a row, which is great. There's only three on there that don't, and I will say this. So Chester Lewis, that's their highest since we separated EIA and Chester Lewis the way we have them separate now. And it's their highest and it's not close. Also, a massive substantial jump from 23 to 24 for Chester Lewis. Heights, it's very close to their highest ever. And their highest ever, it's their second highest ever. Their highest ever was in 2018. So they're knocking on the door. And then South, it's their second highest ever, and their highest ever was in 2020. And we already went through why that one might have been as high as it was. So they're there, they're super close to having an asterisk on their name, even if they don't have an asterisk on their name. And it's easy to look at the numbers and just be like, oh, okay. And I'm moved by numbers, but most people aren't. I realize that I am strange. And so I did ask some of the schools if they would share some stories that the kids said it's okay to share with all of you about how decisions that we've made and programs that we have have impacted actual real students' lives. And I don't usually read from notes because I don't like it. I like to kind of freewheel a little bit up here, but I don't want to mess up any details. So I'm actually going to read from my paper for these. And so when I say we relentlessly pursued every kid, here's some examples of what I'm talking about. At Sowers, they have a night school. If you're like, what are all these programs you're talking about? That's what this is. We could be here for 478 hours if I tried to talk through all these programs with you, so this is just for your reference later because it talks about some of the programs, and I'm going to throw out some names, and you're going to be like, instead of getting caught up in the, what's the difference between? Look at this, because otherwise, this is going to turn into a what programs do we have presentation and not a graduation rate presentation. So Sowers has a night school. They took that list of here's all the kids that didn't graduate, who's close, who could we find, who can we get? And they had a young man who was showing up. His name was Anthony, and he was coming to night school, and he was working, and he was going to get finished. And then one day, his friend came to pick him up from night school. And his friend was also on the list, but they hadn't been able to get a hold of him. So they said, hey, Christian, if you're going to come pick up Anthony every day, you get here and you graduate too. And Christian said, well, if Anthony can, I can. And they got two more graduates before September 30th because they have a night program and because they knew about those kids, and they said, you're so close, you can finish. What can we do to help you? There's Ramel, who was released from JDF custody with minimal credits. He was supposed to go to Gateway, and they were honest. And they said, look, I don't even know if it's possible because you are so credit deficient. But they enrolled him in the Gap program, and he got to work. They got him a haircut, because if you look good, feel good, play good, right, those things? Got him a haircut, he was taken off, got a little distracted because some court dates were coming up, and they said, focus on what you can control, focus on what you can control. And Ramel graduated. After being released from JDF custody, and he works at Goodwill now and is a productive citizen, young man in Wichita. There's Adrian, who was teetering on the edge, not quite credit deficient, but woo, played it close, joined the basketball team and had a basketball coach that said, no, you're going to stay on this sideline. And he did. There's Blanca and Jose from South, who needed to make up a couple of courses before they were allowed to go to the Future Ready Center. And they wanted to go to the Future Ready Center so bad, one in manufacturing and one in healthcare, that they said, okay. And they completed the courses that they needed to make up so that they could go to the Future Ready Center. And not only did they graduate, but they got some post-secondary assets and credentials, and now they're working with well-paying jobs in Wichita. There's DeShawn, who bounced from home to home but found a trusted adult in a counseling small group and made it across the stage. There's Thomas, who lost his mom as a junior and fell off the wagon but found his way to Chester Lewis and was able to graduate. There's Brayden, who was always on track but was able to afford to go to college because of a fine arts scholarship because of those programs and those adults. There's our high school student mentors, our future-ready advocates, and many more who went and found kids and said, we will believe in you until you believe in yourself, and that's how we get kids across the stage. I could tell stories like this all day long. I had to cultivate some of them, and thank you for the principals for sharing those because it's different when you hear, and think about how many different program things you heard. Because one of them was athletics. Is athletics a program? Yes, it is, right? There's Gap. You heard Gap. You heard Flex. You heard Chester Lewis. You heard some of these, you heard fine arts. That's a program. So how are we going to do this? They were joking with me at DLT the other day, and they said, I'm going to need you to quit raising that graduation rate because what are we going to do next? I said, we're going to go get 85%.
I didn't say that.
You didn't. You didn't. But there were some others that were like, I'm going to need that number to quit changing because every, I'm obsessed. And every day I would check the DGSR. Even my own team was like, you don't have to check every day. Yeah, I do. I have to check every day, every day in the month of October. And I would give an update, and they were like, okay, stop, because what are we going to do next? And what we're going to do next is we're going to go get 85% because that's what the goal says. And then after we get 85%, we're going to go get 86%. And we're going to keep relentlessly pursuing every single kid because a high school diploma can change a kid's life. And sometimes, we know that before they know that, and so we have to do everything in our power to get them across the stage. It makes Wichita better, it makes us better, and it can change kids' lives. But there are three things really, truly that stand out of how this was possible. One is innovative programming. You have a list of programming, and programming doesn't just mean alternative options. Programming also means how are we keeping and attracting other kids, right? We have future-ready centers. That's a program. We have athletics. That's a type of program. We have amazing fine arts. I can't tell you how many, Sean Chastain could. I can't tell you how many years in a row Wichita Public Schools has been named one of the great places for music education. It's absolutely astounding. We have ECA programs, we have IB, all of these things are innovative programs. And if we stop innovating, we're in trouble. So we have to keep finding, we have to keep, does that work? Does that not work? Oh, that works. Do we need to divest, to invest over here? That's what Kelly was talking about earlier. Two, data quality improvements, that's that adjusting that cohort. We are too big to leave things to chance. And so we're already working a ton on how do we keep from having to clean up as much data as we had to clean up in future years because we can clean it every month instead of waiting until October after the kids graduate and be like, what happened to that kid? Or I thought, like, that's too many years. You've got to do it as you go. And we need to develop systemic checks and balances in that so that we can do a better job. And then the third one, and this is really where we have the most room to grow, I believe, is what are our early intervention? We have so many amazing alternative options, but we need to really start honing in on what are some of those early intervention things so that we don't need the alternative pieces as much. Not that they're not good. I will put our alternative options up against anybody's, but I'd like to use them a little less. And I'd like to do more early intervention and keep a kid from having to hit a few safety nets on the way down because that can be painful. And I mean, really, overall, relentlessly pursuing every kid. How many rabbit trails can we run down? Well, we should run down about 3,500 of them every year because that's how many kids are in that cohort. So before I take questions, I do just want to, I do just want to say thank you. Every human connected to Wichita Public Schools should, I can't do cartwheels, but they should do cartwheels, high-five with friends. They pulled off something amazing. 5.1% in a year? That's insane. That percent growth is insane. So nutrition services, the folks that come every day and make sure our kids are fed, they should be celebrating because they're a part of that number. Our guest staff, who make sure that kids have a teacher when their teacher is sick and taking care of themselves like they should, they should be celebrating. Our community partners, how many mentoring community partner groups do we have that help us find kids so that they don't slip through the cracks? They should be celebrating. Our facilities programs, that even then when we call them 478 times and say, it is too hot in this school, and Luke wants to screen our phone calls at that point, they should be celebrating because we need kids to be able to get to school and we need them to learn. Our Student Support Services Group, our counselors, our mental health folk, like, they should be celebrating. Our paras, our teachers, our bus drivers who find a way to get kids to school every single day. Addie and her team should be celebrating because when we say, hey, we think it's this and not this, they're always willing to play ball on that conversation and try to figure out what's the best. Of course, our parents should be celebrating because we can't do this without them. Our kids should be celebrating because none of this would happen if they didn't say, oh, you're right, I can graduate. Because we can't drag them kicking and screaming across the stage. At some point, they have to willingly walk across the stage themselves. Our administrators for being willing to go after numbers and not go, there's no way we can reach that goal. Yes, there is. And then all of you. Because like Kelly said earlier, without the choices you make, we don't do that. There's no way. It's not possible. So I just want to say thank you because that's an insane, insane number. And I knew I was going to do this because I even told them, I said, I don't read from my notes, but I think I'm going to be so overwhelmingly proud of everyone that I'm going to break. And I did, darn it. But I would love to take your questions and celebrate with you in whatever form that means, but if you make me do a cartwheel out here, it's not going to go well, so.
Thank you so much. Kathy?
Wow. I feel your emotion and your passion and your shock and awe. That was a wonderful presentation. You explained it very well with the denominator and the, because I'm not a math person. I got exempted at Wichita State from taking math. I had to beg. I do have a few questions. You said that early intervention is the area that you feel that we could grow the most in. At this current time, what are we doing for early intervention?
Yeah, so we've developed, particularly in math and in English, some options for our students who we know they're not quite ready for Algebra I or they're not quite ready. I mean, they have to take English I, but they need some additional support. So we have some very specific interventions for math and English, but interventions in high school look very different than interventions in the rest of our system. And a lot of that intervention is honestly understanding the high school system, understanding that you have to come to school, understanding that your grades matter, because it's really hard to convince a ninth grader of that. It's really hard to convince a ninth grader of that because that hasn't exactly been their reality their whole life. And then, why am I going to just believe this random adult who's telling me that my grades matter right now? So some of those early intervention pieces of get involved, be involved. And we have enough research to know what indicators are going to say you might be somebody that gets off track. Like, I need to know you might get off track before you're off track because if I'm constantly reacting, then I, so we're working on some credits-on-track metrics that are a little more dynamic and in real time so that I can look at, okay, which kids are on track? Ooh, which kids are on track based on the classes they're in right now? If they pass them all? Which kids are on track based off the grades they have in the classes they have right now? Because if you're in this group is on track, but then you're not in this group is on track, that means your grades right now are probably doing something I don't like. So can I intervene now instead of waiting until you fail the class and then having to repeat?
I like that. I'm a preventative type of believer as well as a reactive. So tell me more about adjusting this cohort. How far are you from completely getting it cleaned up to being able to be on top of it?
Yeah, probably about three years, to be totally honest.
Okay. And is that doing it monthly? Is that doing it weekly?
Yeah, so you can only, you can only adjust what's happened in the last fiscal year. So you can't, you can't go back four years. You can in some circumstances, but they have to be very unique. So we need to do a better job of every, so now the principals, every month, get a list, here's every kid that's exited your building in the last month, and here's what exit code they have. And educating folks on which exit codes count against us, which exit codes don't count against us. Is that exit code right, or is that exit code wrong? What records do we have that maybe that exit code is? Because sometimes we know the code's wrong, but we don't have the proof to prove to the state, hey, two years ago, we messed that up. Can we fix that? No. You don't have proof. So really developing those systems, and like, we had a meeting with our registrars and counselors a couple of weeks ago to tell them how important they are in this process. Because sometimes you don't, I'm just putting in exit codes, right? You don't realize how it impacts the larger system. So be able to help them understand, no, what you're doing is super, super important. I think all of that goes to cleaning up that cohort, but really, true, I mean, will we ever be 100% on top of it? No way. We're way... We're way, too big and there's not enough checks and balances in the world for that. But until it's cleaner, probably about three years because it's gonna take us that amount of time to flush out this side and bring all the new processes in with those kids.
But if we could only go back a year, the fiscal year, why would it take that long?
Because there are certain kids that you can clean up in a special circumstance, but you can't clean up... You can't clean all of them up.
Okay.
So, it depends on why they're coded as a dropout, what you can submit.
And there could have been human error in the codes.
There's a lot of... Every human makes an error. I've made like 17 mistakes today since I've been sitting up here. So, we'll never get rid of human error.
Correct.
So, it'll never be 100%. But we can create systems and processes to mitigate the human error to the greatest extent possible. And that's really what we're working on. And that's gonna take time and training.
And I would add too, the proof part of it is a challenge all across the state. So, you may know this kid ended up here, but if you don't have any documentation to back that up, you can't... We can't just go in and change codes.
Right.
So, we have to have proof to back it up.
Correct.
But that... It's not unique to us. It's big scale because we're so big.
Right.
But every state, or every school district around the state, has that issue that, "I know this kid moved to Oklahoma. He told everyone he moved to Oklahoma. We don't have any proof that the kid moved to Oklahoma. So, he's marked whereabouts unknown."
Wow. And that hurts us.
Mm-hmm. Because whereabouts unknown means they count against you.
And he's still part of us.
And he's still part of the cohort.
Because, yeah. Well, I celebrate you tonight. Thank you, Dr. Hatfield. Really, thank you for everything that you're doing to clean it up. That's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Noc?
Thank you, Dr. Hatfield, for the presentation. A lot for sure worth celebrating. Kathy actually asked a lot of the questions. I was gonna ask, I do have two other questions though. So, how did standards reference grading affect the graduation rates?
So, our high schools aren't... It is teacher choice. Some of them want to use that, some of them don't want to use that, but it's not a mandate in any way, shape, or form. So, I'm not sure there's a... I don't think you can answer the question when there's not a systemic approach to it at the high school level because the teachers do get to choose at the high school level.
And then, in terms of the credit recovery, academic recovery, can you tell me more about how the standard, the rigor, or just like the educational quality, how that compares to, you know, more traditional?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, there... Most of them use a program called Edgenuity that is aligned to the standards. So, Learning Services has to go through there and say, "Okay, here's our English I standards. Yep, Edgenuity. Here's the English I standards." And the kids have to watch lessons and take assessments and pass before they can move on. That is the major platform for the credit recovery. Now, they can... We can award credit based on mastery. So, if I take a pre-test for Unit 1 in Biology and I know all about the parts of the cell and I can take a test and tell you I know all about the parts of the cell, then I don't have to redo all the lessons about the parts of the cell because I already know about the parts of the cell. So, that does allow kids to churn through some of those recovery things faster because they can demonstrate on the pre-assessment that they already have some mastery of content. And then, it allows them to skip over pieces... You've already demonstrated mastery on that. You don't need to show me again that you know how to do that. But then, other ones where you know the parts of the cell, but you don't know anything about how genetics works. So, then they have to re... They have to really... I mean, they're gonna spend more time. It takes typically about 40 hours of coursework in a recovery credit course to finish it. So, depending on, if that's the only thing you're doing, could you get through that pretty fast? Yeah. It is. But the fact of the matter is, that's probably not the only thing you're doing. But yeah, it's usually 40, 40-ish hours total.
And I would just throw out, personal experience. You know, I had a son who did EIA in middle school, and Edgenuity is not a joke. I mean, it is... And he didn't test out of... I mean, he didn't pass any of the tests to get... To quiz out of any of the stuff. So, it was... It's not super engaging, so it takes work for the kid, but it isn't low rigor by any means. We also have ELO. We also have... We have kids that will just get traditional credit, retaking a course in the first block or whatever. We have some of that too, so.
Yeah, it's not all Edgenuity, right? There are some of them. To be honest, the Edgenuity success rates in math are not very high. Math on a computer, right? Probably not gonna grow great. And so, most of those kids are actually recovering that credit via summer school or, "Hey, you're in Algebra I and Geometry in-person right now, taking those classes." So, it really depends on what the program is. But yeah, everything is checked to be standards-aligned, but we can award credit based on mastery. It's not based on time with your butt in a seat. And so, once a kid demonstrates mastery, then we can award them credit for that.
Third question, sorry. You kinda touched up on this, talking with Kathy about the early intervention. I could definitely feel your passion. So, you know, a question for both Kelly and you. Just, any more details on like what that looks like? Or just like, you know, plans for the immediate future with that?
So, I'll start an answer and you'll probably finish it. But one of the strategies, one of the things that we know about graduation is that Algebra I is... Can be a gatekeeper class, and if you can't pass Algebra I, it's very hard to graduate. So, the next presentation that we're gonna do about the interim goals, that's one of our interim goals, is that eighth grade math goal. And we haven't been focused on that full bore like we've been focused on graduation rates. So, there's room to improve there. But that's one, I would say, one of the things on early intervention, along with, I don't know where it's at right now, but I know you're working with the team on some credit-deficient tracking methods and able to see all of that kinda stuff.
Yeah, there's... Without being a total nerd, there's a Principal Supervisors' monthly report and what sort of data are they consuming based off of who might be on that early intervention list so you can see that, which is super and super important. But I really, really investing in freshmen. And I think a big key for us is, so, we had... We used Escher dollars to pay for senior mentors. They were called senior mentors, right? Senior liaisons. And they really focused on seniors. Well, we wrote a grant and got it for all of the schools that we applied for it to change those from senior liaisons to high school student mentors. Because are we actually gonna get more out of them if we... Yes, they can do seniors, but I actually need you to go mentor these freshmen so those freshmen don't ever get in that boat that those seniors got. Now, can you full-fledged take the switch all at one time? No, because you don't wanna leave your seniors over there on an island. But we're pulling... We're taking that senior liaison model and pulling it down to say, "How can we start switching that from top-heavy to bottom-heavy for the freshmen so that we need less alternative options as they go through the system because we caught them earlier?"
And one other thing I'd throw out there that might feel like connecting a couple dots that are not near each other, but Lawrence mentioned it several times, that when kids are connected with something in the school, they're more likely to graduate, whether that's JROTC or Journalism or Future-Ready Center, whatever. So, having that five-year plan in eighth grade where I'm thinking about the courses I'm gonna take and then hopefully getting them into a course that they're interested in, that, you know, the schedule spins and, "Oops, sorry, you didn't get in automotive," even though that's really your passion, to do a better job of getting those kids in a class that motivates them, especially in their freshman year. Because freshman year, don't typically have a lot of electives. So, ensuring that... That may seem not like an early intervention strategy, but it is. If kids have a reason to show up to school and something they like, they're much more likely to do the things they may not like as much, so.
Absolutely. I think another early intervention in that same vein is in strategic plan goal number two. The interim goal in high school is that they will have a post-secondary asset check-in every month. Well, that's all about graduation and it's segmented out by month and what's appropriate and what the juniors are talking about that month is not the same as what the freshmen are talking about that month to help kids understand, what are these other things that might give me the tie, like Kelly mentioned, and the reason to come to school other than Algebra I? Because while it pains me to admit, Algebra I is probably not the reason, a lot of kids are choosing to come to school every day.
Thank you. Thank you, Noc. Melody?
Lauren, this is so rich, everything that you've shared with us. I mean, the excitement that you showed more pride and, you know, just, "Oh, my gosh, we did this." But there's also excitement that's built into all of this because it is so very connected. I remember when we had our retreat, the board retreat, and then leadership was there. And it was there that we talked about how we wanted to be able to get out to the public, our strategic goals, and how we would actually be able to hardwire what it is that we are trying to do, what it is that the community helped us to create in terms of goals for this district, and then to actually go about the business of implementing, of putting these goals into action and that we would share this information with our public at our board meetings. And we're doing exactly that. And I am so hopeful that the public is watching this because I'm just looking at, there's this chronological timeline that was given to us about month-to-month, exactly what would be happening. And so, we're at the point of graduation. And, I mean, my goodness, if we can't crow about five points, I don't know. Something's wrong, you know? If we don't get excited about this and say, "We're doing some things right. There's a lot that we..." We haven't left it on the table, but there's a lot that we still need to do. I get it. I understand. But this is something that we can be proudful of. And I think I said it at our last, on Friday, when I was talking about how we have to create a new narrative about our district. Our district is moving in the right direction. We are putting into place some things that I think can truly change how we educate students. And the way that you were, and everyone, as you named, everyone from the custodial staff all the way to our administrators, to the district leadership, and everyone in between made this happen. It wasn't just one department. It was a district feat that made this happen. And I'm... I just, you know, I'm very empowered and energized by this one goal that we have met. We have interim goals that will get us even further to the 85.2 or 85.?
84.3.
84.? Well, where we wanna go, though.
85.
85.
We're gonna have to change that after we hit it.
Yeah, because I think we're gonna hit that. We're gonna hit that fairly, really quickly. So, having said that, I still want to take a moment. I know you lifted up and highlighted some areas. When we're talking about these four sectors, free lunch, students with disabilities, virtual, and foster students. Foster students, I was gonna say kids, but they are students. The growth and the trajectory that they're on is phenomenal. I say this to say that all boats, how does it say? Lift...
Rising tide...
Rising tides raises all boats. And so, when you think about it from, not from an economic perspective, because I remember that's really, it was coined for an economic vision. But when you look at what it is that we're trying to do and the disparities, the challenges that we have in our district, and I'm not only talking about racial disparities, I'm talking about gender. I'm talking about academic. I'm talking about when you look at these four quarters or buckets that we discussed. If when we lift and focus and target on everything accordingly, we'll lift the whole district. And so, when I see, and I remember also at our board retreat, I was the one. I was the one that said, "I wanna focus on African-American male graduation rates." Boom. Here we are. I mean, we're talking about being able to almost erase that disparity, that gap that was so glaring. And that's not to say that some buildings, and even when I look at it from building to building, those rates have gone... The graduation rates have increased. But, yes, I'm so proud-filled of the work that's been done by all of these different organizations and entities. I know I saw Dr. Polite that was here for a bit. He's no longer with us right now. But that was but one organization that I know has helped when we look at the increase and the closing of that gap for African-American graduates. But, yeah, rising tides. We've got to be able to focus on all of our different groups and... Because that is what's going to lift this whole district. So, job well done. I'm just eager to see, you know, the next report that we have as well as the interim goals that we're working on. Yeah.
I better start tempering expectations because there not gonna be a 5.1% jump every year. I mean, I'm just saying.
It's okay. I'll make it.
No, it's... I'm very excited too. My husband is not in education and he doesn't get it. So, like, I was trying to explain how exciting this is to him and he was like, "Congratulations."
Yeah.
And so, I think all the emotion came out tonight because I'm like, I'm around people who understand right now how big of a deal this is. And like you said, it's a true team effort. Dr. Polite sent me a very nice email the other day when I sent DLT the numbers and I said, "Don't leave you and your team out of this either." Because I think about every time he would send us a picture when he was at JDF with another graduate.
Absolutely.
And every three and a half kids, 0.1%. Relentlessly pursue every kid. And it takes all the humans to relentlessly pursue every kid.
So, and when we're talking about, I know I could go on and on and I'm gonna attempt to keep this short, but this is so, it's so very, very important. So, when we talk about early intervention and we talk about the need, that that's where we have the biggest area of the ability to grow in. We also know, and you've already identified it, that our alternative programs are phenomenal. And that's an area that we can grow. No, we... I mean, it's not what we want to see happen, but we need them. We need them simply because life happens. And so, yeah, I just, it's important for me to lift the unsung that are out there. And that's gonna be the Chester I Lewis's. Oh, gosh, I just have it. I'm gonna do this and I'll be done. Chester I Lewis South, Southeastern Sowers. When I look at the growth rate, everyone grew, as you said. I mean, every... We have Northeast Magnet that's at 98%. I mean, we have Northwest that's at 93. We have East Hy that's now at 88. And then, we have the growth that's in these buildings. And I'm talking about Chester I Lewis more specifically and Sowers, most people don't even think about, students that attend and graduate from Sowers. But to get the growth that we saw there, to go back and pull those students, that's something. And we have to keep doing it. Because all of those students, as you would say, Superintendent, they're all our students.
Everyone.
Every student. So, thank you. I'm done.
Thank... No, thank you, Melody. I just wanted to give a small example of, I just recently went out with the nutrition service drivers as they were delivering meals. And I had an opportunity, we were all standing there in our jeans, in our work clothes. I actually worked and helped push the food trucks around. I was excited for it. But I had a chance to talk to them and I said, "Listen, I'm gonna steal some thunder here. This coming Tuesday, or Monday, we're going to announce some really great graduation This coming Tuesday, or Monday, we're going to announce some really great graduation rate numbers. And I want you to know," and these are all, you know, they're not administrators, they're workers. And that's where my background is. And I said, "Sometimes you forget what we're doing this for." And I told them some of the numbers I thought we were gonna get with graduation rates. And I said, "You have a role in this." And they all stopped and applauded. And so, when I saw Gil starting to lead the applause here, that's very appropriate, because it's something we should be excited about. Five point one, trying to move anything, five point one, is nearly impossible. And then, I have the one small advantage of, I was fearful. When I first got on the board around 2018, seventeen, eighteen, we had in our strategic plan to increase our high school graduation rates. There was concern when we were heading into this last one. It didn't appear to me that maybe we were gonna make it a high priority again. And I was very concerned about that, because there's one, if there's one thing in our sight, in our society, that is a major anchor around your neck, is if you have to admit on a job application or anything else in society that you did not graduate at high school, that is one, there's many anchors that can be put around people's necks. But that's one anchor that we, if we stay committed to working on this goal, that's one anchor that we can help remove. And I also just wanna, and so, I appreciate your emotion on that, Lauren, one hundred percent, because I feel that as well. I tell you, I also want to just put out a little, and I hesitate to do this, because I don't want to point out one particular group. But we had a 2.5% increase with African-American females. And that is one of the lowest increases we have. And so, compare that to American Indian males with a thirty-two point six percent increase. But I point out their small increase because our female African-American students get it. They understand the importance of graduation. The reason why they're only at a 2.5 is because they have never fallen below eighty-one point five in the last eight years. You see special education males up nineteen point two percent. This is a commitment across the board. But I just wanted to also point out that our African-American female students have led the way on our graduation rates for many years now. And we need to tap into their attitude about what it takes to be a successful student. And I appreciate them, and I just wanted to point that out. Diane?
Dr. Hatfield, thank you for the presentation tonight. I appreciate you walking us through the numbers, because oftentimes we hear, "We just want you to be accurate, we want accurate information." And to walk through very detailed examples of how this is actually more accurate than what we have had in the past was very compelling this evening. And so, thank you for those examples. Because oftentimes I have conversations with people, and it's like, we're gonna be honest with the data. It's the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I can say from my experience of being on this board that I have seen a real commitment from the district leadership team, all the way down, to be honest and accurate with the information that we have. And I know that that is not always the reputation out in the public, but I can attest personally that I have witnessed that, and tonight you've displayed that as well. And so, thank you for that commitment. I love the tagline of relentlessly pursue every student, because we also recognize, even though we're dealing with numbers here, that these actually represent individuals that have a purpose and a destiny calling, that they're to fulfill in life. And so, to give them this other step forward, and it's not, and I correct that, it's not to give them a step, they have earned this step. It's not a graduation diploma in name only. This represents what they have earned to this point in their life. And so, it's not, it's not a gift to them, it is something that they've earned. And so, I just want to thank the district for remaining committed to being honest with the data, no matter where it leads. And so, with that, I do want to thank my fellow board members for asking really good questions tonight. And we've had a, we've had a dynamic discussion this evening, so I don't have any other questions to add. I just want to say thank you to all the staff, to everybody that is involved with us, from the biggest details down to the smallest details. We are forever grateful for the dedication that you guys have to the individual students that we have. So, thank you.
I don't know how Kelly's gonna arrange the district, every human in the district, like, giving themselves a standing ovation, but somehow, some way, every, every, every human needs to give themselves a standing ovation, because every human's part of it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Diane. Julie?
I don't really have anything further to say. You know, everyone has made great comments here to applaud your work, but I do want to just be on the team to also say how much I appreciate your work and how we are definitely celebrating with you this great achievement.
Parting a walk-away statistic, I was telling Stan this the other day. If they get to senior year with us, we can get ninety, we get ninety-one percent of the kids who were seniors last year graduated. So, if we can get them to senior year, we can find a way. We just gotta find a way to get them to senior year, so.
Thank you, Lauren.
Great job.
Thank you. Latona, next item, please.
Strategic Plan Goal One, Elementary and Middle School Interim Goal Data.
Kelly?
All right, so, still hanging out in Goal Number One. You'll recall the overall student outcome we're looking for in Goal Number One is graduation, but it takes a lot of steps to get there, and we want some academic preparedness to come along the way. So, this is our update for Fall Screener and Middle School Math, and a little bit of State Assessment sprinkled in, too. So, thank you to Amanda Sharshul and Holly Ingram, and I'll pass it off to you guys.
Welcome, Holly and Amanda.
Good evening, Superintendent Bealefield, President Reser, Vice President Albert, and the board. For those of you who don't know us, I'm Holly Ingram, Executive Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction. And Amanda Sharshul is my better half. Don't tell my husband I said that. She's the Executive Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction. And it's a really cool segue coming after Dr. Hatfield's presentation tonight, because she talked about that early intervention piece. And often, in elementary and middle school, we don't get to see where they end up. But we really, being able to see these graduation rate numbers is exciting for all our staff, as she pointed out. So, we're here to give you an update related to the elementary and middle school goals around graduation rate and some changes that we're gonna make on these interim goals. So, as you know, last spring, when we were finalizing our strategic plan, our interim goals for elementary and middle were both around decreasing that percentage of students scoring Level One. So, in elementary, decreasing the percentage of students scoring one on the reading Kansas State Assessment from forty-seven point six to forty-five point six in third grade. And then in middle school, decreasing that percentage of students scoring one on the math assessment in eighth grade from sixty-seven point three to sixty-five percent. So, those were the interim goals when we were finalizing the strategic plan. However, there's been some changes related to the State Assessment. For our State Assessments that students will take this upcoming spring in 2025, that the Kansas State Department of Education is making. So, overall, the changes, the big piece of that is changing the cut score. So, there's a new assessment, there are bullets up on the screen for you. So, updated blueprints, there's new items, new cut scores will be set next summer, new performance level descriptors. They're increasing the use of block-based items. Block-based items mean I give you a graph, or I give you a reading passage, and there's multiple questions around that. And then reducing just a standalone writing item. So, overall, changes to the assessment. So, as a result, we really cannot compare spring of twenty-four scores to spring of twenty-five scores, because they're different assessments. And those cut scores won't be set until the summer. So, then hopefully by spring of twenty-six, we can begin looking at that comparison and come back to the State Assessment.
So, as Holly mentioned the changes, this required us to take a look at both our elementary interim and our middle school strategic plan interim goals. So, we have chosen to continue to look at decreasing the percentage of students who are not proficient or not meeting performance benchmarks. But we are going to switch to utilizing A-reading for third grade and A-math for eighth grade. I do want to point out, these percentages right now are different for elementary and middle. So, elementary third graders were not required to take A-reading last year. So, our baseline of fifty-six point five percent of kids not proficient is from fall of this year. And we're working towards fifty-three percent by May of 2025. I was with principals at Principal PLC the past couple of weeks, and that is two kids per building. If we can make sure two third graders at every one of our elementary sites moves into proficiency, we will make that goal. And for middle, that is a spring to spring. So, they did assess A-math in eighth grade last year with a sixty-three percent of students not proficient, and we're working towards fifty-nine point five percent by May. So, what did this shift mean for elementary teachers, coaches, leaders? Very little, actually. We will continue to use our proficiency scales to plan dynamic lessons. We are directly aligned to state standards through those, state standards through those scales. And in the interim, we are going to measure progress using an assessment that has a question and response format that is substantially similar to state standardized assessments, which is A-reading. We'd already started the work last year of aligning the skills on an A-reading report back to our proficiency scales or standards with some pilot buildings. And that work was beneficial, because now it's required for second through fifth graders to take this assessment. So, it is given three times a year instead of once a year, which also bodes well for being able to look at that data and really improve instruction more frequently than we get State Assessment reports. There is an individual skills reporting, report available. So, what that does is it takes a student, and it says they are meeting standards or not meeting standards in four different areas, including reading informational and reading fictional, as well as foundational skills and language. It's a familiar assessment, which was a bonus for us. We have given it in the past in our upper grade levels, and it's administered whole group. So, when you think about giving an assessment to your students, one-on-one is pretty high lift for our teachers, but a whole group administration is a pretty good get. So, we'll continue to support our teachers, coaches, and leaders, and how to use those reports to inform both their core instruction, what they're doing in language comprehension, as well as their reading intervention. I do want to point out also that as we move forward with A-reading, we look forward to providing some reporting measures for you more frequently than we did State Assessments. We were also asked to give a Fall Screener Performance Update for you guys. So, you have seen this graph from me for four years now, so, four years of fall data. I do want to point out a typo in the kindergarten letter sound fluency really quick before we get started. In the green text, it says fifty-three point one percent. Underneath it, instead of three point eight percentage points, it's five point three. So, this table is for falls worth of data on screeners that we assess our elementary students. We are getting familiar as a board with LNF and LSF, that's letter name and letter sound fluency, as well as WordSeg. You'll see first grade nonsense word fluency, and then second through fifth grade CBMR, which is an oral reading fluency assessment. We do believe it's important to look at year-over-year growth on the same assessment, given in the same window, because this tells us information on instructional impact on student outcomes, specifically, how is our professional learning going? Do we have the appropriate curriculum and routines? How are teachers teaching? And what processes do we have for school improvement? So, the incremental gains have added up to some larger gains. You can see in that far right-hand column. And we do attribute this to our teachers. They are hard workers, never met a teacher who didn't want their students to succeed. Our coaches, our leaders, really focusing their efforts on the science of reading and how we help our students learn to read, which you all got to experience last week when you went to Harry Street, Hyde, Spate, and OK to visit some really hard-working primary teachers. And we're excited about that last column. We've seen some pretty significant gains over the years.
So, as we shift to middle school, as the superintendent pointed out earlier, math hasn't really been a focus for us. And if you remember, as we were setting the strategic plan goals last spring, one important piece was having a measure specific to middle school, because they kind of felt left out, and we weren't really being as intentional as we could have been monitoring that data. So, shifting from the math state assessment to math, the A-math screener, is not a huge shift in what the data will tell us. It'll actually give us a little more data three times a year, as Amanda mentioned, similar to the A-reading. It's a screener we have been using for quite some time. But I don't know that we've been using it to the greatest extent that we could with our teachers, with our leaders, and having those data conversations. What are we doing? We're using it to decide who is in intervention, who's not. But then, how do we help it better inform our instruction? How do we intervene early? As Dr. Hatfield was talking, this is one of those strategies that can help us that transition from middle school to high school, and are we sending them as well-prepared as we can? So, it's gonna give us, similar to what Amanda said, the individual skills report, so we know that on each student. We've been giving it, so it's familiar to our teachers, and it's administered whole group. But I think we can get better about how we use the data more frequently with our teachers and our leaders as we monitor that. Because we all know what we monitor and what we expect, we see growth in that. So, I think that intentional focus that you all set for us last spring is gonna see some growth there. So, beginning similar strategy, supporting our teachers and coaches and leaders in how we use that. We also have a new product we're using that's actually funded by the Kansas State Department of Education. It's called Math iExcel. We're using that in our intervention programs. We started using it on a smaller scale last year, got really positive feedback. So, we expanded that to all intervention in middle school. It gives us some really good standard-aligned data. So, the A-math, similar to A-reading, it's an adaptive test. So, they take about thirty to sixty questions. If I get the first one correct, it's gonna adapt, go a little harder. If I get that question incorrect, and it's measuring six to eight different skills across, based on grade level. So, the A-math I take as a fifth grader is different than A-math as an eighth grader, so forth. So, then that data then places me into intervention, and then the Math iExcel gives us even more data on what our instruction should be. So, utilizing both of those pieces gives us more flexibility, gives us more real-time data to be able to intervene with students in that middle school math intervention time. So, we haven't been sharing math data, so don't cringe when you look at the screen. But as Diane said earlier, we want to be honest and accurate. So, while we haven't been giving A-math data, we did want you to see where we've been. And this hasn't been a focus for us. So, it's not all pretty, like Amanda's had all this pretty green. It's not all green, there's a little bit of green, but we haven't been focused on it. So, this is where we've been in the A-math sixth, seventh, and eighth. But you can see, one, a big reason why we want to focus on eighth, not just because of the shift to high school, but specifically, we have a lot of growth to do there as well. But we'll still be monitoring all grade levels as we look at that with middle school.
My green helps your green.
Her green helps my green, that's true.
So, it's a lot of data in a short amount of time. What questions can we answer for you?
I had a call from a constituent recently, and I think I gave them the right answer, but it reminded me to maybe ask this at a public meeting. Could you please explain the difference between FastBridge and our State Assessment?
Yes, FastBridge is a screener. So, you've heard me liken that to going to the doctor for your physical and them saying, wait, something might be wrong here, we need blood work, we need x-rays, we might even need an MRI or to see a specialist. It's gonna give us that red flag that something is wrong in that student's trajectory towards meeting benchmarks. It's very grade level-specific, and you can give very discrete skills. So, like in kindergarten, letter name, letter sound, two very independent skills. And our State Assessment covers a broad range of standards. It is not given to all students, whereas FastBridge screener, we have measures for K through eight, and State Assessments three through five, six through eight, and tenth grade.
That's, that is perfect. And the assurance I tried to give them is that we are not with FastBridge, we are not just waiting till the State Assessments come in, and then we see some scores that we're not happy with. That we're using FastBridge in the fall and the spring in order to improve the State Assessment scores. And also, not just one-time assessment score. I mean, we're, it's really an incremental, let's have them improve throughout the school year. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's administered three times. But I think the other difference between a screener and a State Assessment is the progress monitoring capabilities of FastBridge. So, for many assessments, you can intervene and assess in between screener windows as well. So, a kindergartner who might not have all their letter names in the fall could be checked in on multiple times before they even hit winter.
Okay. Okay.
That's not a function of a state assessment. They don't have that.
Right. Okay, thank you. Perfect.
Another thing on the screeners is they're nationally-normed scores. So we don't run into, unless they totally change or we switch assessment companies, what we're running into with the state assessment. So they're totally rewriting, so now we have to wait for new cut scores. Like their, their adjustments are so fine-tuned because it's nationally-normed. So their scores, we can use and predict pretty easily where state assessment you're changing, now we have to pause and wait. So that's another difference.
I appreciate you making that part of the public record. Diane?
Going back to state assessments, if we go back to slide three, if I understand this accurately, we are going to give students the state assessment in the spring with a new state assessment, and then the cut scores are determined in the summer?
Mm-hmm, yes. So our-
Can you explain how that makes sense?
So, we will give all our students the state assessment as we've always done, so same, grade levels are assessed every spring.
But a different test, a new test?
Yes, a different test. So after that testing is all complete, then the special assessment people, I think they go to some uni, or at some university called KU, um, they look at all of the scores, and then from those scores, and all their statistical analysis by really smart data people, they set what's, what's a one, what's a two, what's a three, what's a four, what cut scores determine those performance level indicators. So they have to wait until all the assessments are done, look at all the data, analyze all the data, set the cut scores. Then I believe they've told us we should have our state assessment scores back by like September, October of fall of twenty-five. So we'll know how we did, but we won't really be able to compare to twenty-four scores. Does that make sense? We'll still know. We'll know, here's what we got, ones, twos, threes, fours, just like before.
Okay.
But we won't be comparing the same test score, so we kind of want to wait till, uh, spring of twenty-six to then make that comparison.
Gotcha.
And I'd, I'd jump in. One thing I learned today, um, I don't know what all the, the range of numbers is, but a three hundred is the bottom end of the, of a three on the state assessment. So what the state has done since two thousand and seventeen, I think, or two thousand and sixteen, whenever these, this test has been in place, is they track, what is the ultimate outcome for that kid? So what do you get on your state assessment, and then where do you end up? And what they found is, a lot of kids that get a two-eighty, which is a two, graduate from college. Right? So, so, because what we're trying to do is predict college and career readiness. That's, if you, if you see the form, it has the different, um, you know, low level of readiness for college and career, or you're ready, or you're beyond ready. I'm summarizing, but it's, it's close to that. But essentially, what, what they found is that we are having Kansas graduates with certain scores that are successful in post-secondary, um, so that's part of how they might adjust those scores to, to more accurately reflect reality that a student with a, and I'm making up two-eighty, but that's just an example, a student with a two-eighty, actually, it should be in a three, because they are ready for college and career, and we know that because they've proven that they are by going to college and graduating. So, um, again, smarter people than me are figuring all that out, but that is one of the factors that they're using. They have a long history of knowing where do these kids end up, these students upon gradu-, adults, I guess, not kids, but after graduation, how successful are they? And they can, they can use that to create the ranges, so that parents have, really, as a parent, you're looking for, is my kid on track? Right? Is my kid on track? And so we want to make sure that's accurate as we're telling parents about that.
Thank you. On slide four, we use the word benchmark. Can you explain what that means exactly in that definition?
Yeah, so on the screener, not the same, but similar, it has four different scoring categories. So college pathway, low risk, meaning, so college pathway, hey, based on this, we have no concerns. Low risk, you're at grade level, but we shouldn't not look at you, but right now, the risk of you not doing well is low. Then some risk and high risk. Some risk and high risk is what we then look at in tier-two or tier-three intervention, because you're below benchmark. So benchmark is basically that cutoff point in the middle of not being at risk, needing additional intervention.
Okay. And then, uh, on slide eight, I'm looking at, uh, we use the word district proficient. Is that going to be the same measurement?
So, the numbers are kind of inverted, so the goal is not the, decrease the percent not proficient, this is the percent proficient, if that makes sense?
Okay, so just the opposite. Okay. Very good. And then you also mentioned, um, some of the processes that we have for school improvement. And can you expand on that a little bit?
For elementary, middle, or both?
Either one. I think just in general, people want to know, what are we doing? Here's the data, what are we doing about it? Are we doing something different, or are we doing the same thing over and over again? I think people are interested in, in what are we doing to address the problems that we see and seek to improve.
Yeah.
I was just looking at my school's school improvement plans, as I've been listening tonight, and I think it starts with our data, collecting accurate data first, and then looking at what is that data telling us, so that we can build school-level goals that align to the strategic plan goals. So for instance, if I'm supporting a building, and they're still looking at some pretty low proficiency in those word recognition skills, um, we're going to set goals there first, because we know to improve our school, we have to start there. So each building is responsible for creating a school improvement plan that's data-based. They work with their teachers through the assessment protocol on how to collect that data. They measure their goals, so just like you've heard, maybe WIGs and lead measures and scoreboards, they're doing that at elementary as well.
Yeah, um, one intentional thing we're doing in middle school math, because there's been a lot of new, is providing additional support for teachers on the new intervention program. We have it next week, I believe, so they got started, they're using it, so now, now that you're in it, what questions, how are things doing? So since there's a lot of new there, it's just making sure we provide that continual support for both teachers. And then what we're also doing, Amanda mentioned, like the Principal PLC, we're doing that both in elementary and secondary. So really doing deep dives with our leaders around all of these data pieces. So then, how is my school improvement plan influencing this data? So then they can go back, because what may be working over at this school, then I can hear that from my colleague and take that to my school as well, or, hey, I'm struggling with this, what are you guys doing? So really trying to increase that collaboration around the strategies that are working. I think for us in middle school, it's first really monitoring and looking at the data to then identify where the strategies are. They're ahead of us in elementary, since reading's been that goal for a while. So I hope as we start to come and share this, there's going to be a little more green on that middle school math screen soon, so.
I think the simple, um, way to remember school improvement for us is plan, you know, plan, study, plan, do, check, act, there's, you know, those things. Continuous improvement, right? So I'm, I don't ever stop improving. Like I get the next set of data, and I look at what I'm doing, and is it working? And if it's not, I adjust, and if it is, I keep going, and I add another goal.
And one, one other thing, just to, uh, MTSS, I don't know, you mentioned that much, but we talked a little bit about tier-two and tier-three kids, but that's another, is that in every school for a school improvement plan? Is that, yeah?
Yes, so, um, MTSS has just been part of our system for a very long time. I would consider Wichita Public Schools trailblazers with MTSS in the state of Kansas. We often go to places to learn about MTSS and realize that we, we're doing all the things that the schools around us are just now learning to do with their tiered systems of support. And every single school uses MTSS as their model for school improvement, uh, part of school improvement as well.
If, if I can, I'll share a little experience I had last week at a school, where I was able to be part of some staff meetings, two different staff meetings at a K-three-eight school, and I was able to sit there and witness them really share, they were talking about specific students, what intervention programs they needed, and then also, like, hey, if we change this schedule in the morning, then we can align some interventions for these students, so they don't miss out on certain things, but then they can get the interventions that they need. It was a very encouraging meeting to witness, um, in, in two different ways, and so I, I just want to share that with the public, that these aren't just numbers that we're hearing from the board table, like, these are, I'm seeing them in classrooms, I'm seeing them with principals leading these meetings, I'm seeing teachers organize and structure their days, their weeks, and their time around specific students to give them the, to meet the needs that they have for, for their academic needs. And so I just, I just want to say, I was very encouraged last week to witness those meetings. So it really is coming from the top all the way down into the classroom, these numbers, these goals, these metrics and measurements. And so I just want to say thank you to the staff, that, that it was very encouraging to witness that. So thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Kathy?
You're getting a load full tonight, aren't you? Thank you for being transparent with these numbers. It would be so easy for you to just tweak a number, to make it look good to us and to the community, and I really want to tell you that I appreciate being honest with us and open to the community to give us that honest baseline, like, no, it's not all good. I mean, Dr. Hatfield gave us, wow, and here we got to follow her up, but you know what? We are here to encourage you to do the plans that you have set out to do. I have no doubt that we will see all green numbers. I mean, I really believe that, because I believe in you, so I know that it's going to happen. I would like to share about my experience at OK Elementary last week. I was so impressed with the kindergarten and the first-grade teacher. Superintendent Beilefeld was with me, and I, I was engaged. They had those students, their attention was, they didn't even know, they knew we were there, because they saw us come in, but after they got used to us, those children, and they knew, they knew the sounds, they knew the letters, they knew their special letter for the day, and I was so hopeful. I'm so grateful that we have letters. That's what I learned on, well, we called it phonics back then, but I really believe we are going to, we're turning a corner, because the foundation of our K through five is changing. And I really appreciate, again, that transparency and that honesty. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Melody?
Thanks, uh, thank you for the presentation and the update. You mentioned, um, reports more often. Which reports and how often will we be receiving them?
I am not sure how often we'll be in front of you, but we will have three times a year where we get fresh screener data on both A-Math and A-reading, which is not the same as state assessments, that's once.
Oh, state, okay, so it's the same as, isn't that what we receive with FastBridge?
A-reading and A-Math are FastBridge assessments, yes.
Okay, so that, we're already doing that. It's not going to change? And then I thought I heard also that each building creates a plan, is it an improvement? What is the plan?
Um, so part of our accreditation process is having a school improvement plan. Superintendent Beilefeld and Deputy Superintendent Alvarez are wise in that we don't have a strategic plan and a school improvement plan that are different.
Okay.
So they're one in the same for us in Wichita Public Schools. So you all set the big goals, then we have the interim goals, and then buildings get their individual data, and those are their wildly important goals, and then they create action steps to meet those interim goals. So it all funnels all the way down from our strategic plan down to the building, and then they might identify what is the action that's going to move this interim goal around each of the goals.
And I've been in a couple of buildings where they're actually posted. Um, would we say that at the elementary level, is that more for a teaching staff and/or a support staff? Not as much for, let's say, the kindergartner or the first or second grader? Is it, is it reminders that this is what we're here for, this is what we're doing, this is how we're going to get here?
I think we all play the game a little bit different when we see the score. Um, I have supported buildings and grade-level teams that have found very innovative ways of putting data up around their building, that not only maintains the dignity of the student, but motivates everybody in that space to make that number move. So some buildings are using, you know, bubblegum machines and pop, pieces of popcorn or off-to-the-races, different ways to show their data and how they're doing, in ways that all staff members are reminded, this is where we're headed, and all kids can see where they're at.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. That was it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Noc?
Is the data dashboard, uh, posted yet?
Um, so if you go to the website, you can see, I don't have the sheet in front of me, but you can see the three main goals. With the website transition, they've ended up on three different pages, I don't know if you guys have seen that since it got transitioned, but it isn't much of a dashboard anymore, because you kind of have to click through things. So, um, I've not shared that with the team to get that cleaned up, but, um, yeah, it'll look like it did before, as far as the dashboard goes, so.
And then for, uh, A-Math and A-reading, is that administered, like, on a, like a school-issued device, or is it like pencil and paper?
They're on their individual devices in middle school, because they're all, okay, and in elementary. So yeah, the student, um, logs into their portal, they click on FastBridge, and then it gives them whatever the assigned screener is. So the teachers don't actually have to, um, assign those, so it's set up based on their grade level.
And so this is something that, would it necessarily be able to be in pen, like pencil and paper, like, you know, if a parent, like, wanted to consent out, or?
To what, sorry, you said?
Like, you know, consent, like, out of taking, like, the, like, the students taking the test, or the screener on the, like, a school-issued device?
There's no capability of A-reading or A-Math, because they're adaptive to be given paper pencil.
Okay.
So a parent, I'm assuming this is where you had it, a parent who might not want their student to take the assessment on the device, that's the only way to take that assessment, is on the device.
Okay. And then, um, IXL, uh, you said that was a, was that a district decision, or was that like a, like a KSDE, like statewide mandate or recommendation?
So KSDE is, uh, paying for it currently. We hope they continue if they're listening. But we, as a district, opted in to use it. So they offered it, um, to districts, but we didn't have, they didn't mandate it. So, um, we started using it last year, um, felt like it met what we had previously used, and our teachers actually liked it better, um, so we did shift to using it. So it was a win-win of saving some dollars and using something the teachers liked.
Right, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Noc. Julie?
I had the same question Noc had, relative to whether the dashboard was on the district website. So I actually went today and started searching, and I had a really hard time finding it. But, but if you're interested, Noc, or anybody else, um, when you go to USD259.org, um, there's a, a box to choose that says, "Learn about Wichita Public Schools," and then from there, you pick Wichita Public Schools Strategic Plan, and then you'll come to Student Success Outcomes, our data dashboard. So, uh, so it, it's there, I found it. But the other thing, as I was searching for it, and as I looked at a whole lot of different choices, trying to figure out what it was, data and transparency is just all over our district website. You know, all of this data that you guys are talking about, and information about all of the different, uh, ways that we, uh, test kids, and a link to, um, the state assessments that, and what they publish, I mean, everything is there. So, I mean, I just, you know, for board members, for the public, um, we, um, there, there is just transparency and data just all over the place, if, if you want to go look for it. But anyway, that's, that was a segue because of your question, Noc. But as far as you ladies are concerned, I think we can celebrate with you also, because you're showing vast improvement here as well. My, my one question is relative to the math performance and your admission that, well, we don't have the improvements here because we haven't been focusing. What is the plan to kind of refocus and also, I mean, I know you can't do everything all the time, but, uh, what is the plan to refocus and also work on getting tho, that improvement?
Um, a simple strategy, unless you haven't been around teenagers, is getting them to take it seriously. So because we, as adults, haven't been focused on it, I can't sit here in front of you and say, we have created the best testing environment for our kids. I'm not saying that's any fault of anyone, it's not the teacher's fault, we just haven't said, this is a really important data point, so we need you to go in there and do your best. So that's like the low-hanging fruit. Is that going to get us everything? No, but might it get us some? Yes, because if you haven't been around kids these ages, it's really easy to just click through, right? So really, telling them the importance of it, so that they take it seriously, so that's one step as we- So that's one step as we focus on it, share it with our leaders, share it with the teachers so that they could say, "Hey, Moses, when you go in and take that, because my eighth grader last year probably didn't do this as seriously as his mother would like him to. We want you to do your best so we know what skills you have and what skills you don't have." So that's step one. And then also just really supporting the teachers and our buildings as we look at data. Then what is working with those kids, what is not, and getting that early intervention piece in place.
So you guys are going to first refocus yourselves? And then that will then move the focus down to that level as well, so, yes.
And can I say, Julie, that's exactly what we did in elementary to start with. We started with our leaders and our coaches before we ever came to our teachers. And I think that strategy pays off to make sure that everyone's on board before we ask our teachers to take one more thing on, give them the why, tell them that we're doing it alongside with you, we're here to learn with you. I think that's a, it's a good strategy.
Very good, thank you.
I would throw out a couple more things because I'm glad you brought it up. If you think back to last month and Sean's presentation about vacancies, this, this data is fall to fall. So the seventh graders that tested haven't been in seventh grade math very long, right? This really reflects what did they learn all last year in sixth grade in some ways. So making sure we have highly qualified teachers that are, that are trained, that are, that are able to have the resources they need is definitely a piece of this bigger picture, too. People do this, right? Like the human beings, Lauren kept talking about the human beings. Without great human beings, none of this works. So that, that's a piece of it. The other thing I wanted to share, if you go back to slide six, the other, this one, correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, but I think if you look at Fall '21, second grade, that's 34.1%, and then you go diagonal down. So those second graders, then the next fall become third graders, 44.8. They become fourth graders, 48%, and now they're fifth graders, there's 52. So that's a co-horted group. And it's a different way of, and if you look kind of down in those diagonals, you see we're doing a lot of really good things for that, too. So do the fourth grade teachers need to keep improving fourth grade instruction? Of course they do. But are we seeing year-to-year improvement for those groups of kids? And we have mobility and we have kids in and out of the district, so it's not exactly the same group of kids. But overall, when you draw that diagonal line down, we're seeing improvements that way, too, which is also important. So, and the last thing I wanted to say, just because I have the mic. Lauren misspoke, and she was texting me, that she said the seven, the cohort for graduation is determined at seventh grade, is determined at ninth grade. And she just misspoke. So I wanted to make sure we're on the record that the first day of freshman year is when the cohort starts. Okay, they're part of, they're part of dropout rate, but not part of graduation rate. Anyway, so, yeah, so, all right.
To Kelly's point, though, and I haven't looked recently, and I think this is true, for the first time in quite some time, we have, we have no or had no secondary math vacancies. And that, I don't know when the last time that was true in Wichita Public Schools. So that should also make a huge difference. So pointing that out, but like, the fact that there's no secondary math vacancies is like rare. I'm not sure if that's ever been true in my time in Wichita Public Schools.
Great job.
Thank you very much. Is it the will of the board to take a 10-minute break before the consent agenda? Or would you like to power through on the consent agenda? And we're not that far away from the executive session. Okay. Latona, next item, please.
Consent.
Kathy, any consent items to pull?
E5.
That's Isley, that's Isley K through eight transition plan and boundary change. Is that the only one, Kathy? Okay, Julie? Any consent items to pull?
None to pull.
Melody? Yes.
Thank you. I thought I was just talking to Stan. Okay, so the financials are here, and that's under consent?
Yes.
I do have some questions, so I would pull.
Okay, the resolutions or the appointment of trustees or the treasury warrants?
Well, what I was looking at was actual, on page two of 10, three of 10, five of 10, and nine of 10. So where, let me see where I'm at. And it might have been...
And Melody, I'll, I'll circle back around to you.
Circle back, yeah.
Okay, Diane?
Nothing to pull?
I have no consent items to pull. Noc?
I was going to pull E5, Kathy already pulled that out, nothing else to pull.
Excellent. Melody?
Is the, are budgeted items in here?
No. The, all the financials are the change since we have a new chief financial officer?
Yeah, no, I don't, nothing to pull.
Okay, all right. I move that we adopt the consent agenda except for the Isley K through eight transition plan and boundary change.
I'll second.
Moved by Stan and seconded by Diane. You may vote. There you go, you got it? Motion carries 6-0. E5, the Isley K through eight transition plan and boundary change. Kelly, if you want to introduce that and introduce Fabian or?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll open up for questions, but we, Fabian had offered to share a short presentation. You guys have seen most of this, but the public, you know, can see what the, what the impact of the changes.
And good evening, first, thank you. One thing I do want to clarify, and I appreciate all the parents that came up and spoke and advocated. Tonight's board decision is strictly boundary related. Again, we want to make clear that programming changes, including special education and some of those pieces are really administrative decisions. And so again, so even last year when, when we went through the building closures, again, the placement of, the movement of programs are really administrative decisions. The vote that's tonight is simply to make Isley a K8 and to build a boundary for Isley that, that reflects the K8 designation, basically opening up middle school boundary.
Kathy, do you have any questions? And Noc, I'll get to you second.
Well, yes. I really want to make sure that if I choose to vote yes for this, that these parents that got up and spoke tonight are not going to be affected. Their student will not be affected. I want reassurance of that. I'm compelled to open up discussion with the board after hearing from the last meeting and from tonight's meeting about these mixed ability students. And isn't there another way that we could consider or think about to keep these students there if the families want to choose to keep them there? Are we taking mixed abilities completely out of Isley? I, I need understanding here. If you could help me, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, okay. So Lauren has done a, I don't know if you want to come speak to this or not, but she did a good job at the community meeting about explaining that the, the square footage in the classrooms at Isley won't be enough if we add sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In August, you guys passed a facility master plan that included changing Isley to a K8. So that's the direction as a team we've been headed. We actually have at Isley, I'm going to, I'm going to go off memory, but I'm pretty sure, visually impaired, we have a PBS three, PBS, Positive Behavior Support classrooms. We have interrelated students, we have mixed ability students, we have pre-K students. So the plan that we're bringing forward as administrative, as the administrators is to move some of those programs, not all of those programs. So we are not discriminating against everyone who's disabled. Disabled students will still go to school at Isley. We just didn't have the capacity to continue to have all of those programs there. And just like we did last year with Park and Clark and some of those programs, we had to relocate programs to another, another place. Hadley had a PBS program or two, we had, we had to move those to other locations.
So help me understand, are the students and the teachers going to be able to move over as a group and stay with one another, or they're going to be split?
That's yet to be determined. I don't, I don't know that, we know the answer to that.
Okay, so if we have to move this program away from Isley, which will affect some of our families, is there another option that we might be able to have to allow them to move together with, with their instructors, their teachers? If the program's not going to be there, then the teacher's not going to be there. So can we find a way so that maybe it'll, the change will be a little bit easier on them?
The way that, as far as the location of where it's going, I, I don't have any knowledge of that tonight on November 4th. Some of the staff might, but I, I don't. We, we go through this process every year. So specialized families that have a student in a specialized program like this, every year before August, or before April 1st, get a letter that notifies them of where the location of their services is going to be. So we do this, we do this every year. When we closed schools, and Fabian, jump in if I'm wrong on this, but I believe that we did not require any staff to go to a certain place to follow a program. So when we moved Hadley's PBS program, and maybe that's a bad example because we kind of changed, changed paths on PBS.
No, I hear what you're saying, right.
But anyway, we did not say, "You have to go with that program to this new school."
Correct.
We allowed staff to have that choice.
Okay.
So my guess would be we would say, take the same approach with staff at this, in this situation. And say, "You have the opportunity, you'll have a job for sure." Now if that staff wanted to stay together, we would honor that, but we aren't going to force them to stay together.
And, and we don't know at this point in time where these families will be relocated to? Do we have any idea?
I, I'm not prepared for that question tonight.
Okay, okay.
Ted, I'd known you were going to ask that, I might have been able to have some information, but...
It came as we converse.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm, maybe it's the empathy in me, and I'm not looking at it intellectually, but I have a lot of empathy for these families. And after I heard them speak tonight, I can only imagine if I were in that spot, how I might feel. And I guess they're, they're sitting here looking at me right now because I'm talking. And, you know, whatever happens, USD259 will take care of your children. Well, I, I know, I know, change is hard, change is so hard. We've gone through this in March. And I, I know as a parent with two small children at one time, to make those changes, it's very difficult. And, but I do know that this, this district will take care of the families and the students. So if I vote for this tonight, I am actually voting that these, well, I've already voted for it. I've already voted for it.
No, but, but hold on, the, the location of services is not a board decision.
Right, it's an administration decision.
Does that make sense?
I understand that.
So you aren't voting tonight?
No, I'm voting for the boundary change.
Right, you are not voting to move mixed abilities.
And this is going to make the K through eight work, which I am advocating for, yes. Okay, thank you.
Noc?
You know, personally, I would like to see Isley K through eight have a mixed abilities program. My question is, first of all, just like the actual boundary changes as well, but I do have some questions, too, about the mixed abilities programming. So in theory, if we, so for clarification, regardless of the bond issues passing, tonight's decision will be to turn Isley to a K through eight?
That's true.
And then if the bond issue passed and if it was a will of the board, there could be a mixed abilities program at Isley, you know, contingent upon, you know, if we were to mandate, you know, like a building expansion for it?
If you guys wanted to amend the plan, I mean, that, that's not, there, there are some site improvements that are part of the bond issue for Isley, but that, that specifically isn't one of them. More like parking in driveways and some things like that. If you guys wanted to amend the plan, by all means, that, that would be, that would be, you know, something we could look at.
And then how soon could we make that decision?
Well, I mean, it's your plan, right, as a board? If that's, I, I think we'd want to probably do some due diligence. We already have four different specialized, specialized programs there. So, you know, I, I, I don't want to commit to, to that being our recommendation, but our recommendation doesn't matter if you guys say that's what we need to do. We would, unless we're going to, which I think the ship has sailed on the $450 million number. So we'd have to look at what we're not doing in other parts of the bond issue in order to make that happen. But I, I don't think the cost would be huge. I don't know where at the site we would do that. I mean, I don't have, again, not prepared for that question. That's the first I've heard anyone ask that, so...
You know, I just, yeah, it just came up. The question I had for more to boundary changes, so how would the boundary changes affect like student attendance at Stuckey Middle School? In terms of like, like, you know, if, you know, declining enrollment and things like that?
So as we're looking, obviously, we're going to have to take some students out of Stuckey that will now occupy Isley. Currently, when we looked at the data, there were 215 sixth through eighth graders that live in the impacted boundary area, that what, what is now going to be the new Isley boundary, which is the area in the red, that area east of Oliver. And of those 215, 118 are actually at Stuckey. So if we were to convert it today and make the change today, Stuckey would decline enrollment by 118 students. Now, I, I will say, we, this, this has been a topic of discussions for us because we need, we need to grow Stuckey. And so we felt that by us growing and by us starting with sixth grade next year, going to seventh and eighth grade, it would give us some time to brainstorm and to, to find some, some ways for, for us to get more students to Stuckey Middle School.
Kathy? Oh, I'm sorry, Noc, were you done? Okay, Kathy?
I want to piggyback off of what Noc said about, we could amend this plan for Isley and put maybe to build an annex or to build a room. And how many families, how many students are there in mixed abilities at Isley?
It's four classrooms currently, I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
It was four under Esser, so they've actually already gone from four to three.
Okay.
Classrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
So we had four, there were four mixed abilities classrooms at Isley with Esser dollars because Esser went away, we had to make some changes, so now they're at three. So there's three mixed abilities classrooms, there's three PBS classrooms, there's a visually impaired classroom, there's a gifted classroom, and then there's two pre-K classrooms. When you think of specialized programs, think about programs all schools don't have.
Right.
To Kelly's point earlier, we don't, we don't have any elementary school with as many specialized programs as Isley has. And that was a choice made because there was space at Isley. We've pulled the maps, we've written in, okay, we're going to need this many for math, we're going to need this many for English, we're going to need this many for the art teacher, we're going to need this many. And so we know how much exact space we need. There's 11 classrooms currently occupied with a specialized program of some kind at Isley. We need at least six of those for to house the middle school. And that's changing some of where everything is. So it, it's not a great, it's not ideal, but it's also a numbers game. You can't add those and keep everything. And it's, again, it's, it's not ideal, but you can't keep, we can't keep everything.
Right.
And then it just becomes about, what do you choose?
Right. Right, and how did the administration get to that point of what to choose? And...
Just the number of classrooms, I think, is that fair?
Just the number of classrooms?
Yeah, so there's, those two create six.
And that would be another, another question for you all, if you want to amend a master plan, what about the Positive Behavior Support classrooms? Because we haven't heard advocates from that, but that's another decision we'd have to make. And just because we haven't heard from advocates, do we make a different decision? That, again, that, we would need to do some analysis before I came back with the recommendation, but, you know, like I said, it is your plan, if it's the will of the board, you know, to pivot, we can.
I will share, it is not uncommon for programs to be moved and to change. It does happen, and it's happened many times over the years. Again, the other part that we also, I mean, we do have buildings that have room, there's other schools that have room, I mean, that's part of the master plan and the exercise that we went through last year also.
So then why couldn't we move a different program from Isley to those buildings and keep mixed abilities at Isley since we have had advocates from this area? Like you said, we haven't had any from PBS, so, but we've had them from these people and their voices have been heard.
Yeah.
I mean, is that a, something to consider for the board to say, "Well, you know..."
Again, it's not a...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The placement of the programs is not a board decision, so...
Forgive me, you're right, it's just the boundary.
Yeah.
So let me give you some ideas to take back to your people. Is there another consideration of perhaps maybe moving PBS to the buildings that you would be moving the mixed abilities at Isley to and let them stay? Is that an option?
So that, just so we're clear, both mixed abilities and PBS would be moving out of Isley. That's what current, what is the current plan?
So what is staying?
The visually impaired.
Visually impaired, gifted, pre-K.
So yes, we feel like we're bringing you our, the best recommendation based on the information we have. We, could we have chosen pre-K? Yes, we could have chosen pre-K. Could we have chosen visually impaired? Yes, we could have chosen different programs. We're bringing you what we feel is the best recommendation. So...
Thank you. This is just the boundary changes, the further discussions of changing the master plan obviously would be down the road, so I move that we take the recommended action on the Isley K8 transition plan and boundary change. Moved by Stan, seconded by Melody. You may vote. Motion carries 4-1 with Noc voting against it, and obviously, we have one member missing tonight. Oh, Kathy, did you abstain? Okay, so that's a no vote, so it passes four to two. Thank you for catching that. Next item, please.
Miscellaneous superintendent's report.
Kelly?
All right, I'm just going to look forward, first off, well, I'll look backward real quickly. Thank you guys for coming out and seeing some great teaching last week, that was a lot of fun, and I think hopefully tied in some, some things that you voted for, some decisions you made, and how it aligns. Looking forward, I've got a couple exciting things coming up, we have JROTC Veterans Day Assembly on Thursday, that is at WSU, at the auxiliary gym at Coke Arena. So new location, just make sure you have that on your calendar, 10:30 start time. And then next week, we have the literacy summit, so please share that with everyone you know. We hope to get a lot of engagement and talk, discussion about literacy, all the great things we're doing as a district. And then following that, I believe we are a go on November 18th for the workshop about the cell phone policy. So we're going to meet, that'll be at AMAC, and just a workshop, so no action taken, but we'll, we'll have that meeting coming up before Thanksgiving. So the intention of that meeting is really going to be to look at some feedback from administrators, you know, when you all voted on the policy change last year, the school year had already started. So now that we've started a new school year with the policy in place, here's some feedback on what they think, how it's going. We may look a little bit at the recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Task Force from KSDE and what they have said, and really just a chance to kind of hear and process, do we, what's next with that policy? Is there, is there a desire to make continued revisions, or is there a desire to leave it as is? So, and then, then it'll be a Thanksgiving break, so, and then our next board meeting right after that. So that's all I have for my report, thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Kelly. Latonia, next item, please.
New business and Board of Education requests.
Are there any new business or Board of Education requests? Next item, please.
Executive session personnel matters for non-elected personnel.
Diane?
I move that the board go into executive session for discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual for 10 minutes following a five-minute break. The executive session will include all the board members present and the general counsel, Dan Lawrence, and superintendent Kelly Beilefeld. The open meeting will resume here in the boardroom at?
8:52.
At 8:52.
Second. Moved by Diane and seconded by Stan to go into executive session. You may vote. Motion, motion carries 6-0, we'll be back at 8:52. We are now back in order from executive session, no action taken, no vote needed. Latonia, next item, please.
Adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Kathy to adjourn, you may vote. Motion carries 6-0, we'll see you in December.